Welcome to the June 28 Board of Supervisors meeting. As customary, we'll start with a moment of silence. Does anybody have one? Yes.
Just thinking about all the women and girls in the United States who have been stripped of their rights and are having a hard time dealing with becoming, once again, becoming a second-class citizen.
Vice Chair Scott, can you leave this in the pledge, please?
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right. Looks like we have an extra item, 4.1, consideration of extra item, consideration of public health officer appointment, and ratify physician consultation services contract. And so, CAO Parker.
Yes, good morning, Board. After your Board accepted the resignation of Public Health Officer Eric McLaughlin, I was informed by the Health Services Director Jonathan Courtney that there was an urgent and immediate need for a public health officer or alternate to provide services and to comply with state regulations. I was still evaluating all our options at the posting of this agenda, and to ensure continuity of services, I temporarily authorized this appointment and contract and bring this before your Board for consideration today.
Right. Are there any questions from the Board?
I think we need to look up what the urgency, the urgency is that it needs to be taken up, informed after the posting of the agenda, and it needs to be taken up because it's an urgency, we need to have a public officer assign her in place.
Yes.
So I'm not hearing anything from the Board. Open it up to public input if there's anybody that would like to comment on this, adding this to the agenda. With that, I'll bring it to the Board for action.
I make a motion to approve this urgency item as it came up after the posting of the agenda, and it needs to take, be taken up before our next meeting, which is in two weeks.
Second.
So I have a motion to end a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And motion carries. And should we just take this up a little later, or would you like to do this now? We can, we can do it now if you'd like. Should it be long?
I don't believe so, but I don't know. If you have questions.
I guess we can take it up right now.
All right. Yes, so after last Tuesday, I began researching our options to retain a public health, public health officer in the interim while we were going to begin our search to replace Dr. McLaughlin. At the same time, I heard from Health Services that there was an urgent need and that they needed a public health officer as soon as possible, which is why I drafted with the assistance of Ms. Grant the contract and made the appointment of Dr. Gary Pace. We recommend today that you do appoint Dr. Gary Pace as PHO through the, through July 31st of 2022 and ratify the contract presented to you today.
All right. Any questions from the Board? Supervisor Sabate?
Yeah. Thank you very much. Glad this item is on here. Thank you to those that brought it onto the agenda. I have a question about the notice part and then the signature page, and I did not look back at any previous MOUs that we've had with other POs that we were in a consulting relationship rather than an employment relationship. But here, it only states that all notices, reports, and communications will be given to Public Health Services. And then at the bottom, this is being signed by Public Health Services, and I feel that the PHO is under the jurisdiction of the Board of Supervisors, so I'm kind of curious if we can add at least a signature. I don't want to take away anything that's already on there, but if we can add, I think that the notices typically go to the county administrative office, which then provides that to the Board of Supervisors. That's typically what I see on contracts. I'm, I'm not sure. I'd love to hear what should be there, but I know that our signature, or at least the Chair's signature, should be on the signature page. That makes sense to me to do that.
Ms. Grant?
Yes, thank you. If your Board determines to approve to ratify the agreement today, a line will be added for the Chair to sign indicating formally that the ratification occurred on this date.
Okay.
All right. As far as notices, your Board can adjust the agreement as you deem fit. If you prefer the notices to come to the administrative office directly, that's certainly your call, and you can make that change on the face of the document today.
So those are my only comments and suggestions.
I agree with both those, making those changes.
I agree.
All right, anything else from the Board? Hearing nothing, I'll open it up to the public. Is there anybody that would like to speak on 4.1?
Could you spell the name?
Spell the name of Dr. Pace?
The one you're going to hire?
Yes, Dr. Pace. Pace. Gary Pace.
P-A-C.
Yes. All right. Looking online to see if there's anyone in Zoom, and I'm not. So I'll bring it back to the Board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to appoint Public Health Officer Dr. Gary Pace and ratify the physician consultation services contract.
With amendments?
With amendments, thank you.
Second.
So I have a motion to end a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And motion carries. Next, we have our consent agenda, and our consent agenda is commonly items that are non-controversial, so we usually pass all of them in one motion. And if there are anyone from the Board or the public that would like to pull it, we can do so and talk about it at a later timeframe. And so, it looks like we have to pull 5.1, 5.4, and 5.11 so far. That's what I have as notes. Is there any others that would like to be pulled? Supervisor Sabate, it looks like you have your...
5.11 was already on the list.
Okay, and so I have that. Yes, I'm about ready to open it, so I need you to just wait for me, okay? So I'll open it up to the public. If there's anybody that would like to pull, can you come up to the microphone and state what you would like to pull and why? Thank you.
I'd like to have one, 5.17, pulled. Concerns Cobb Water and Lake County and a parcel of land. I would like to know the background in the minutes from Cobb Water District.
So when we, when we get to that, we'll, we'll talk more about it. So 5.17, are there any others? All right, looking online. Are there, is there anybody online? All right, I'll bring it back to the Board for action.
What was the one after 5.1 that you pulled?
It's 5.1, 5.4, 5.11, and 5.17.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve from the consent agenda 5.2, 5.3, 5.5 through 5.10, and 5.12 through 5.16. I think that's right.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we move to our timed items. Our timed items, we'll, we'll come back to those extra items after we get through some of these, or if we need to fill. So from here, we'll go on to our nine, or 905 item, which is a 6.1, Lake County Animal Care and Control, and I see them in the back. So if you'd like to come up, it looks like we have someone hiding.
It's a big one.
Our Pet of the Week.
Good morning, everyone.
And I see JT's here as well. Quick announcement, congratulations JT on the twins.
It's a, it's a couple of someone. So this week, Pet of the Week, we have three little black kittens. When they, when we got them in, they were all pretty much identical, so we had to put little collars on them so that we could distinguish who they were. We are located at 4949 Hellbush Drive in Lakeport. If you have any questions or would like to adopt one, our number is 263-0278.
Is that all of them?
The other one's, the other one's a little shy. I think it's still in the carrier. I hope it's still in the carrier.
He'll be ready.
Should we see anything crawling around? Just let me know before I...
And while you're still on the microphone, just wanting to know, is, do you have your, I believe you have your cat program that has come back? I know it was shut down for a while during COVID. Wondering if you can speak to that?
We, so I will actually let JT.
Jonathan Armistead, Director of Lake County Animal Control. We did one, one surgery day. I'm in talks with a couple of local vets to hopefully do a continual, and we're looking at trying to do when Dr. Sally, our current contracted vet, is in to do a few surgeries every week. It won't be at the same level as we were doing before, but we do have some progress on that end, so we will hopefully be able to do approximately like six to nine cats a week.
And at this point, you're doing one, or you're not doing any?
We, so we did one surgery day where we did 33 cats, but right now, we haven't been able to do any since our vet passed away. This week, I should have a better idea. I'm supposed to meet with Dr. Sally and kind of work out those, those kinks. She might sign on for more days, which would be able to increase how many we do, and we would also, we're also looking at doing vaccine clinics again.
Okay. If it's possible to bring that information when it is available, because I think it's important with the pet population that we already have, if we can decrease our cat population, not decrease, but stop it from increasing at the rate that it is, I think those programs are amazing, so.
Totally agree. Thank you.
Looks like they're putting them, okay. They don't have to gather them like the other ones they brought.
They didn't put them on the ground like I did last time. That was a bad choice.
All right. With that, we'll move on to our next item, public input. I do have a document here that, for public input, for Joan Moss. Joan, if you would like to come up and talk about the possible drought disaster on Wild Rat Road?
Wildcat.
Oh, Wildcat, okay, sorry. Looks like an R. I did that on purpose, sorry.
To the Supervisors, I have evidence of a false and misleading hydrology report presented by Jason Vine, PE 67800 of Realm Engineering in Redding, California, 96001. The report is part of the plan passed by the Lake County Planning Commission concerning Mombacho Mountain Organics. The project will affect my water, and that is why I complained. I filed a appeal, and I expected it to be denied. So I reported to Sheriff Martin, but we're all concerned with the drought disaster. Many county officials, including Environmental Health Specialist Craig Weatherby and Bill Fox, Lake County Water Resources Engineer, have looked and helped me and supplied their expertise. A Water Resources Specialist from the State Department of Water Resources sent me a map of the well from my parcel, and it's the same well that the hydrologist presented in his report, as the well from which the water will come to water the plants with. But the map she emailed me at my address, had my address on it. 11058, my parcel number, the same parcel number that I have for, for a well, for my well. And I just want you to know, the rest of this letter is inappropriate and opinionated, but I wanted you to have this. And on the other side of this is the well that the Department of Water Resources official sent to me. It's the same well in the document from the hydrologist's report that doesn't have any name on it, but it is the same document. I'm very grateful that you listened to me. There's more than one way to get three minutes of, of information. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joan. Thank you, Joan. All right, is there any other public input? Did you fill out a form? I see, no, not you. No, 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 I see Greg getting up, but, okay. Yes, yes.
Good morning, I'm Greg Bianchini. I live on 13th Avenue in Lucerne, and I'm here today to talk about the needle exchange program that's getting, it's pretty bad. Listen, I was here last week, and the Girl Scouts were here, so I didn't think it was the right thing to do to talk about needles and drugs in front of the Girl Scouts, so that's why I'm back here today. And I think this is, having this truck on this street here in the wide open, and all the kids can see this, everybody can see it, it's child endangerment. I wouldn't let the Girl Scouts walk by that truck and see that. I wouldn't even just talk about it in front of them here. Our own kids, our my neighbors, parents, the elderly, we can't even use our own street that we live on. There are kids that live on this street. There's longtime residents that have been there for, since the 50s. The streets, the sidewalks, the parks, the corners, the playgrounds, yards, lakeshore, alleys are full of drugs, drug trash. It's everywhere. It's really bad. I mean, really, really bad. It's not safe for anyone, especially the kids. This is deadly dangerous. I mean deadly, dangerous, lethal. Fentanyl, you even get any of that even on you, that's it, it's over. You're dead, and it's, it's in our streets. No, no kid should ever have to see this anywhere, ever. And hopefully, we could do something about this, this drug truck on our street.
The truck is not handing out drugs. You're making it sound like they're handing out fentanyl. They're not. They're helping people. This just makes me angry.
Okay, well, thank you. But what I'm, what I'm, the biggest concern is, is the truck, the truck is wide open, they're in the street. I never said that they were passing out drugs, but I mean, it's like a drug party every, every, tonight. It's like a drug party at the end of our street. These people have lived there their whole lives, and they're, this is just wrong. Hey, listen, I didn't say that they can't, I don't have anything against this program. I don't. I'd, I'd even help her, because she definitely needs help, Anita needs help. I'd just ask her just to move to a safe spot where the kids don't have to see this. That's all, and I'd even try talking to her. Listen, I got a letter in here that you need to read, read it. Could she just set up where the kids don't have to see this? That's all I'm asking. I'm not saying to shut down this program. I never said she's giving out drugs or anything like that. I don't even know where that came from. But anyways, it's important. These kids are our future, and right now, the age of these children, like these Girl Scouts were here, 14 years old, that is the age. They need to be safe. They don't need to see this. It just doesn't need to be seen, that's all. And it's important. So.
Can we have the document that she...
Yeah. There's another letter in here, too. But yeah, you know, I've, I've looked around Lucerne, and I think the best spot for them to set up is just at the beginning of town where the Lucerne sign is. It's the farthest away from the school, and there's not that much children traffic there. The 13th Street has the Tower Mart right there. All the kids use that street. I mean, I've lived on that street for nine years. I pretty much know what all the kids do and stuff. All the kids use that street. Everybody does. So it's just a bad spot to have the needle exchange program. If they could just move off that street, it'd be great, and do just a safe spot. So I don't, I don't think that's asking too much. I think that's, it's doable. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public input? All right. I see someone on Zoom. Let's see, we have Linda. Linda, if you could unmute, you have three minutes.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. I am speaking of bringing positive change and serendos service program. I would like to say that it's been mentioned over and over that the residents of 13th can't use their street. I think it's important to get it on the record. The truck is there one day a week on Tuesdays, from 5:00 to 8:00, three-hour time span, one day a week. There is never, ever, any paraphernalia or anything outside of the truck. That is all housed within the truck. There is always someone standing at the doorway of the truck. What is handed out outside of the truck is ID vouchers, food, keychains, socks, and a myriad of other things that help not only drug users, but the homeless in the area. Also, at this exchange, we've had people referred to by public health to dispose of diabetic materials. This is all things that is not being said. It is not a huge drug party. It is elderly and disabled volunteering their time to make sure that all of the community can get the benefits of health. Thank you for your time.
What was your last name? I didn't, I didn't hear it.
Oh, it's Hatfield, H-A-T-F-I-E-L-D.
Thank you.
I am a volunteer there every Tuesday.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
On Zoom? All right. Hearing no other public input, I'll bring it back to the Board for our next item on the agenda, our 906, which is a presentation, a proclamation designating the month of June 2022 as Elder Independent Adult Awareness Month in Lake County, and B, presentation of changes to the state reporting law related to elder abuse. And with that, I have... Start with the proclamation. Yeah, we'll start with the proclamation.
Can you hear me? Excellent.
Always.
Making sure. Board of Supervisors, County of Lake, State of California, proclamation, designating the month of June 2022 as Elder Independent Adult Awareness Month. Whereas the Lake County seniors and dependent, independent adults are valued members of society, and it is our collective desire to ensure they live safely and with dignity. And whereas abuse of elders and dependent adults is a tragedy inflicted on vulnerable adults and an ever-increasing problem in today's society that crosses socioeconomic boundaries. And whereas combating the abuse of elder and dependent adults will help improve the quality of life for all citizens and will allow elder and dependent adults to continue to live as independently as possible and contribute to the vibrancy of Lake County. Whereas the Lake County is committed to raising awareness about issues facing elder and dependent adults and helping all individuals thrive in communities for as long as possible. And whereas the Lake County, and whereas Lake County promotes building safer communities for all of our citizens. And whereas increased awareness of issues of elder and dependent adult abuse increases the likelihood of reporting and successfully prosecuting those who abuse Lake County's vulnerable seniors and dependent adults. Now therefore be proclaimed that the Lake County Board of Supervisors, along with the Lake County Department of Social Services, does hereby designate June 2022 as Elder and Adult Dependent Awareness Month, passed and adopted on the 28th day of June 2022, and signed by the Chair of the Board of Supervisors. We'll do the picture now, Sam, or at the end?
Either way.
Let's get it done right now. Yes. I think I'll take a picture now. Great, okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you so much. My name is Amy Shemansky. I'm the Program Manager for Adult Services of Lake County Social Services. I'd like to thank the members of the Board for making this proclamation on behalf of all seniors and dependent adults in Lake County. Unfortunately, elder abuse is more common than any of us would like to think about. There are several types of elder abuse, which include not just physical or emotional abuse, but sexual abuse, isolation, abandonment or neglect, financial abuse, and self-neglect. Knowledge of the types can help us protect our senior and dependent adults in the community. I encourage everyone to be aware of the warning signs of elder abuse, such as an injury that's inconsistent with the reported cause or a recent change in the elder's behavior, missing items such as personal belongings or credit cards, having a caregiver that is indifferent or aggressive towards them. If you suspect elder or dependent adult abuse in Lake County, you can call the Adult Protective Services Department at 707-995-4244 and make a report. On behalf of the hard-working members of Adult Protective Services Department, I'd like to thank you for your time and for bringing awareness to such an important issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the Board or... Oh, there you go.
Thank you.
Thank you. Crystal, did you want to go over the presentation on, let's see, Presentation of Changes to the State Reporting Law Related to Elder Abuse? Or is that someone else that's making that?
She can't, can't hear.
Yeah, it does sound like there is some kind of noise, and that we're just not getting it.
I don't think she knows.
It's really low.
We can't hear you, Crystal.
Crystal, I'm not seeing activity levels on your microphone in Zoom. You might have...
What about, what about now?
Oh, you got it. Perfect, thank you.
So I just want to thank the Board for making this proclamation. We will come back to the Board with a full presentation on the changes in the reporting law, and also on, at the state level, an expansion of services to seniors. And while it's, it's not a broad expansion, it, it really does mark a change in terms of focus on this really important population in the state, and so I think we can look forward to more expansion at a future time, but we'll be back to give a presentation on that.
Okay. All right, so any questions?
I'll say something real quick. I appreciate the proclamation and the work that we do. We are a much more elderly population. We're about 10 years above the state average, which means we have a lot of retired folks here and a lot of elderly. They're vulnerable just the same as when we do child abuse... They're vulnerable just the same as when we do child abuse awareness and things like that. It's, to me, it's the exact same type of vulnerable populations that we should be protecting. And the fact that we are an elderly population, based on our statistics and population data, means that it's that much more important that we make sure that, that we protect our seniors and our elderly from those types of abuses. So I appreciate the work done by social services and adult protective services.
Thank you for that, and I could not agree more. I think that, you know, this is, I'm really hoping just the start of expansion of these services, as I mentioned before. The funding for child welfare or child protective services, as it's sometimes referred to, is enormous relative to the funding that has been designated for adult services, for adult protective services. So I, I hope this is just the start of that.
Yeah, no, I do too. And just speaking from experience and knowing in our county, the struggles we have with our seniors, I get calls from seniors quite frequently dealing with situations where they were charged more than they were needed to for rides, things like that. People that, that are sometimes deemed as in-home supportive services or even just portray as one and aren't really put through the system will take advantage not only of their finances, but also of their, you know, of their prescriptions. And that's where it gets on the street at times because a lot of seniors are given stuff for pain management. And so in those situations, that contributes to the situations we have in Lake County, you know. And so I get frequent calls and I know, Tina, you've come into my district to see some of the gentlemen and ladies that have been affected by that as well. So I appreciate knowing that we're going to get something to help with that. If there is funding coming down the stream, it's very important. Our senior centers, you know, with the area agency on aging, some of those only supply a certain amount. You know, so any type of other ancillary funding could help at any given time. And so thank you for this presentation and the discussion. Is there anything--
Absolutely.
Anything from the public, anybody from the public that would like to speak on this? Did you have anything else to add, Crystal? I just wanted to make sure.
No, just that I do think this warrants a presentation of, of what is available and what is not because this is over 30% of our population that we're talking about. And it, it is important. And I, you know, while I think it's important to talk about what is available, it's also important to bring awareness to what the limitations are within the system. And so we will come back and do a report that combines both adult services and AAA in a, in terms of what is available to seniors on the local level.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I don't see anybody on Zoom neither, so I'll bring you back to the board. There's nothing else, so we'll close this item. And thank you again for this presentation. And let's see here. Now we have our 6.4. Sitting as the Lake County Air Quality Management District Board of Directors, consideration of fiscal year 22-23 draft budget and consider district updates and annual policies recommendations. And with that, it looks like we have Douglas Gearhart, our Director for Air Quality Management, here to do his presentation.
Good morning. And actually I have Elizabeth Knights on the line on Zoom too. We can, she's my, the Deputy Air Patrol Officer, just in case there's questions that I, she can find them a lot faster than I can. So, okay. So this hearing is to meet the requirements of Health and Safety Code, which requires us to hold a draft budget hearing and take public comment at least two weeks before we adopt the final budget for the district. So every year we, we do this and it's, we have to do a little presentation. We have, take public comment and then we can, you know, move forward. So, so the, the following budget, you know, the district's budget is relatively stable. The district, you know, it's similar to previous years. We have some minor changes. Expenses have gone up. Revenue stayed flat. You know, that's, that's the main issue we're running into. But we have a lot of grant funds which are kind of, it make it look like our budget is expanding, but there's all these grant programs that the state keeps giving us, but we don't have staffing to, you know, it's challenging for us because of the staffing issue and it's hard to hire staffing when it's, grants are, you know, they're an annual thing and maybe annual, oh, we're going to change that and it's a two-year grant now instead of a one-year grant. And so we don't, it's not a solid funding source for us to hire staff off of. So just as, just so you're aware, that, that's kind of one of the issues we're, we're dealing with. The major, you know, change for this year in expenses, of course, is, you know, related to air monitoring and staffing costs with the, the raises and thing that occurred over the last few years. It has impacted our budget quite a bit. You know, we're actually getting great candidates now for applicant, you know, great applicants for positions that are open, but we have to come up with the revenue, of course, to fill those positions now. So we're now at that point. But with monitoring, we're coming up with an issue, you know, the wildfires don't affect us for attainment status and for the community, but there are impacts to the district. We have to now upgrade monitors and we have a lot more work that, you know, I've previously mentioned coming. Some of that is reimbursed by EPA, which is great because we wouldn't be able to do it without it. And that would, if, if we weren't able to have EPA's assistance on this, we would have jeopardized, we would be jeopardizing our attainment status because we couldn't do the monitoring that's required, just because of the cost. Now this year, we estimated CPI close to 5%. Of course, it ended up being 7.7%. So that, that is helping us a little bit. The new salary scale, of course, is affecting our expenditures. That's the equipment costs are constantly going up. You know, everything we do is, is going up, but our revenue is only going up by CPI. So, so we're looking at, we're looking into those issues at the moment to ensure that we have a path forward. So, so the quick, you know, in summary, district revenue is stable. Expenditures continue to increase and have significantly outpaced the CPI. And we're reviewing a fee rule update and we'll be proposing that hopefully in the next few months. So just staffing is our challenge at the moment. So, so that's the first part for the budget. And then we have some awareness items or some guidance and awareness items for you after that. So I don't know if you want me to go through those first or if you want to talk budget first.
Budget first or the awareness items, whatever you decide.
Okay. Well, I, I can just go through the, the topics. So this, this is our action, action item requests. This we do every year just as a continuation of, you know, the general policy direction of the board that, you know, so you know what we're working on and we have the guidance to continue working on it. So, so first, we, we always, every year, we request that the board continue to be opposed to state subvention cuts and support the district seeking additional funding to support the additional workload placed on the district by the state or EPA. If we don't continue to look for funding, then of course that has to come out of permitted sources. So, and we would rather get that money from the people that are requiring the work. So. Second, we request that the board continue to support the district staff to, support the district staff actively participating in the CAPCOA Board of Directors to represent the needs and interests of Lake County related to air quality programs, regulations, and benefits. So that, meeting with state legislators and everything, we need to be there because we're different than the rest of the state, being the only full attainment district, air basin. We get left behind a lot. So if we're not there, they don't think about us. And then third, we request that the board continue the policy direction that health impacts, health risks, health-based complaints, and mandated programs and requirements be given top priority, followed by activities that have regulatory timeframes and/or other funded activities or activities as directed by this board. And then the, then the rest are just awareness items which are in the packet and they're just kind of the ongoing items that if you're interested, I can go through them if you want, but they're just, they're just, so you're aware of what's happening in the county.
There's anyone, any that you want that stand out for you?
Yeah, they're, they're, yeah, they're pretty much a continuing items that are, you know, very similar to previous years. So, but they're, they're ongoing with minor updates. So, so there's nothing that stands out at this point.
I had a quick question about your advocacy for, for Lake County. It's always difficult to have our voices heard, especially at the state if we're not from down south, where there's a lot more votes that occur. Just wondering if there is a coalition of counties that are within attainment that might have a larger voice or does that not exist?
Well, that's us.
Gotcha.
We do have more attainment counties that are coming in, but they have an issue of where all of the benefits that, that we've been denied because we've been attainment for 25 years almost. They have because they were able to adopt those programs and implement fees and funding and things through the years. And now they're coming into attainment. So there's certain, certain laws that were changed to allow those attainment districts, like the vehicle fees. They can keep the vehicle fees. They changed the law to say, take out the attainment. We were precluded as attainment from implementing vehicle fees for many, many years. They took that out because they were afraid that some of those districts that come into attainment would then have the challenge, the, the legal challenges of whether they could keep vehicle fees or not. So there's no way for us to implement them because, you know, it's very challenging with the Prop 26 requirements and all the other issues that go into effect, but the ones that have it get to keep it because the law was changed to benefit them. So.
So we're limited in who can partner with us, but I do appreciate, I know the difficulties that your department has in getting some of the access to some of those grants that are available for those with a lot more pollution in their area that we get denied. But today, I believe it's today, in our consent agenda, we did just approve for an electric bus for Middletown Unified School District, and those are, those are wonderful changes and additions. So I appreciate the work that you've done to bring that to us.
Thank you. And we do have a rural CAPCOA group. That's a subset of CAPCOA, which is the California Air Protection Control Officers Association. So we do have a rural group that discusses rural issues and tries to kind of coalesce as a group on general rural issues that, to get the state attention on. So, so that does, we do get some benefit out of that as well.
Awesome. Do you attend those or is it, is the group, do you attend those group meetings? Okay.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Is there leadership that attends as well from elected officials or no?
No, it, it's an association of just the Air Protection Control Officers. So it's, you know.
Just making sure.
Yep. Yep.
Have any other questions? Any other questions?
Okay. So then all we need is to approve the draft budget and to get either, you know, policy direction on the other items.
Yeah.
Public comment. Yeah. Sorry.
Any other, any questions for--
I forgot.
Director Gearhart as of now. So open it up to the public. Is there anybody in the room? Okay. Come up to the microphone and you have three minutes.
I was wondering if Mr. Gearhart could explain to the public how we're different from all the other places in California because of our identity as a basin? What that means about the air, the basin? Okay. Thank you.
Okay. An air, well, I'll, I'll go into what an air district is. An air district is, is a entity that's created by the state. In rural counties, it is basically the county is the air district. But there are some air districts which are consolidated, multiple counties, like Bay Area has, I think, nine counties. South Coast, you know, I don't even know how many counties they have as part of their air basin or air district. And then you have air basins. And air basins are a division that was created through, by EPA to, basically it's like a watershed, but it's an air shed. So we're an air basin, which means we control and we have little impact from outside of our air basin. So we can control what's, what's impacting us. We do see impacts, you know, of course, like with everything from outside areas, but it's a division of, we're not directly linked to Sacramento. We're not directly linked to Mendocino or Sonoma County because we have ridge lines in between. So we are kind of our own bowl, which is the basin. Other basins include, you know, the Bay Area is an air basin. So that goes all the way from Napa, Sonoma County, half of Sonoma County, Napa County, and all around the San Francisco Bay. So much bigger basin. We're a much smaller basin. So.
All right. Thank you. And so what we'll do--
I, I can go over with you.
Yeah, he'll, he'll come see you after. All right. Any other comments in, in public? And I don't see anybody online. So I'll bring you back to the board for further discussion or you said, and, or action. Right?
Do we need to approve the recommendations too?
I think so. Is that what you're, I think you were asking for those--
Yeah, either, do you have just general direction from the board or?
So I move to approve the proposed fiscal year 22-23 draft budget and also approve of the recommendations from the updates and annual policies.
Second.
All right. So I, so all four can be passed with that motion, Ms. Grant?
Yes. The only thing you might want to add is reference to the staff memo as outlined in the staff memo, those recommendations.
Just amended with the, what was stated by County Council.
All right. So I have a motion to end a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Gearhart.
Thank you very much.
For your work and, and your presentation. So we'll, let's see here. Looks like we have covered our timed items. Let's entertain a short break and then we'll come back and see where we go from there. I'm going to see. Parker would like to go with next or we'll figure that one out. So we'll take a five minute break. Well, we'll be back at 9:55. How about that? All right. We're back from our break. And it looks like we'll go to our consent agenda pulled items. First, we have 5.1, which is, and I'll read it. Approved side letter to Lake County Employee Association, LCEA, retroactive to the start date for October 21st, 2021, June 30th, 2025 MOU, section 5.1 through 5.1, 0.9, covering group insurance for LCEA. I'm authorized, Chair to sign. B, approved side letter to Lake County Sheriff's Management Association, LCSMA, retroactive to the start date for the October 21st, 2021, June 30th, 2025 MOU, section 5.1 through 5.19, 5.1.9, covering group insurance for LS, LCSMA, and authorized, Chair to sign. C, approved side letter to the Lake County Deputy District Attorneys Association, LCDDA, retroactive to the start date for the October 21st, 2021, June 30th, 2025 MOU, section 5.1 through 5.5, covering group insurance for LCDDA, and authorized, Chair to sign. D, approved side letter to Lake County Correctional Officers Association, LCCOA, retroactive to the start date from the October 21st, 2021, dash, June 30th, 2025 MOU, section 5.1 through 5.6.10, covering group insurance for LCCOA, and authorized, Chair to sign. E, approved side letter to Lake County Safety Employees Association, LCSEA, retroactive to the start date for the October 21st, 2021, through June 30th, 2025 MOU, section 5.1 through 5.19, covering group insurance for LCSEA, and authorized, Chair to sign. F, approved side letter to Lake County Deputy Sheriff's Association, LCDSA, retroactive to the start date for the October 21st, 2021, through June 30th, 2025 MOU, section 5.1 through 5.19, covering group insurance for LCDSA, and authorized, Chair to sign. And I'll hand it over to CAO Parker.
Yes. Pam Samick, HR Director, is here to speak on this matter, present it, and answer any questions you may have.
Good morning, Pam Samick, HR Director. After a recent review with the Auditor's Office on the life insurance, we discussed that all benefits being paid for and provided by the county needed to be in the MOUs. And so she suggested that we do side letters memorializing the three benefits that were not in the MOU, which is the accidental life and dismemberment, the Section 125 Cafeteria Plan, and our Employee Assistance Plan. Letters were sent out to all the labor groups, which they all signed. We resent the LCSMA because I had an incorrect date on that, which was November 1st, not October 21st like the rest of the-- October 21st, like the rest of the units. And this is to meet federal and state guidelines for audit requirements. So this is just covering us and listing all, all benefits provided. Thank you.
All right. Any questions from the board? Supervisor Sabatier?
I just wanted to at least ask my question publicly that I had asked, which was just to ensure that nothing changes as far as the expenses of salaries based on this, that it's just previously charged stuff. And the answer I received, and I'm sure that either Ms. Samick or CAO Parker will concur that this changes nothing other than memorializing as Ms. Samick was just mentioning. And so just wanted to make sure that it was clear that there is nothing changing on our salaries, our expenses.
Correct. There are no changes. Those stay the same. We're just memorializing the benefits we provided that weren't previously listed.
All right. Any other questions from the board? Open it up to the public for any questions. Not seeing anyone on Zoom. I'll bring it back to the board for action and I see that we have A through F. And so how would we, would you like to?
Mr. Chair, you will have to take them up separately. However, you can certainly say, for example, for A, motion to approve side letter to Lake County Employee Association as previously described. So you don't have to read the entire item again each time, but since each agreement is with a separate entity, you do have to take them up separately.
All right. Let's get started.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve side letter to Lake County Employee Association as previously described.
Second.
So I have a motion to end a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve side letter to Lake County Sheriff's Management Association with the new date of November 1st, 2021. November 1st, correct?
October 21st.
Is it a further one that's, oh, sorry. Which one is it that we changed?
LCSMA.
Yeah. And that's November 1st, right?
Correct.
Okay. So just wanted to make sure that was the right date. So again, approve side letter to Lake County Sheriff's Management Association with November 1st, 2021, through June 30th, 2025, as previously described.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And motion carries.
Mr. Chair, move to approve side letter to Lake County Deputy District Attorneys Association as previously described.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Mr. Chair, move to approve side letter to Lake County Correctional Officers Association as previously described.
Second.
So I have a motion to end a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chair, move to approve side letter to Lake County Safety Employees Association as previously described.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And motion carries.
I believe I'm on E, approve side letter, Mr. Chair, move to approve side letter to Lake County Safety Employees Association as previously described.
Second.
Or am I doing that one again?
I think you did do that one.
Okay. So Mr. Chair, move to approve side letter to Lake County Deputy Sheriff's Association as previously described.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And motion carries. And that I think concludes all of them. So thank you for that. We'll close item 5.1 and move on to 5.4, which is approve grant agreement between Lake County Animal Care and Control and Best Friends Animal Society in the amount of $10,000 and authorize the animal care and control director to sign. And B, adopt resolution to appropriate unanticipated revenue in budget unit 2811. And so with that, I see we have JT in the room, so we'll go ahead and let him take the floor.
Good morning, Supervisors. So Best Friends Animal Society is a national group that awarded us a grant to help with our community cat program and handling feral cats in a more humane manner. There was a typo on the memo. It reads budget unit 2811. It should be corrected to 2711. It was just a mistake on my part and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
2711, you said?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Any questions for Director Armist? Hearing none, I'll open it up to the public for any questions. And then hearing nothing, I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the grant agreement between Lake County Animal Control, Animal Care and Control and Best Friends Animal Society in the amount of $10,000 and authorize the Animal Care and Control Director to sign.
Second.
So I have a motion to end a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And then B?
I will offer the resolution.
Resolution has been offered.
With the amendment 2711?
With the amendment 2711.
Good catch.
Okay. Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Crandall?
Aye. And so it looks like we, we have concluded on 5.4. Thank you, JT.
Thank you.
All right. And next we have 5.11, adopt resolution to name a certain existing unnamed road in the Lower Lake area. And it looks like we have Director DeLeon on from Public Works and I'll give the floor to you, sir.
Good morning, Board. Scott DeLeon, Public Works Department. Hope everybody can hear me okay.
Yes.
This morning's item is a resolution of intent that would set the date and time for your board's consideration of the naming of a unnamed, current unnamed road in the county. We inadvertently left the, the date and time blank in the resolution and so we fixed that yesterday. It was entered into Granicus. It should be available to you as revised resolution dash Snow's Lane or Snow's Road. And so by approving this resolution this morning, you will be setting the date and time and location for the public hearing. It'll be July 26th, 2022 at 9:15 a.m. in your board's chambers. And again, that will be the public hearing for you to consider the proposed road name. So apologize for the oversight and be happy to answer any questions if you haven't.
Are there any questions for Director DeLeo? Anyone from the public have any questions on item 5.1? Is it 11? Hearing none and seeing none on Zoom, I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, authorize the amended resolution?
Offered.
Resolution has been offered.
Okay. Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you for that presentation. And so with that, we'll move on to our 5.17, which is pulled by Joan Moss. Let's see. Adopt resolution authorizing the transfer of APN 030083360 from Cobb Area County Water District to the County of Lake and authorize the chair to sign the certificate of acceptance and record the deed, certificate of acceptance and preliminary change of ownership report. And Scott is on. I'm going to give the floor to you, sir.
Yes. Good morning. Thank you, Chair, board members. So what you have before you for your consideration today is transferring a parcel which was inadvertently transferred to Cobb Area Water during the consolidation. As you're aware, there was a water district consolidation up there. They consolidated eight districts, including three county managed water districts. Mount Hannah was one of them. During that consolidation, Mount Hannah's assets were transferred to Cobb Area Water. One thing was also inadvertently transferred and it goes back to a 1977 deed where there were parcels transferred from the Kelseyville Lions Club to the county. So in the listing of assets, a parcel in Nice, which was transferred from the Lions Club to the county back in 1977, was further transferred on to Cobb Area County Water. So this action today seeks to rectify that. Cobb Area Water has no need for a parcel in Nice. They'd like to transfer it back to the county. They have executed a quitclaim deed, so we have a resolution authorizing that transfer. And then we are requesting that the chair be authorized to sign the certificate of acceptance and record the deed.
Thank you, Director Harder. Are there any questions from the board? Hearing none, I'll open it to public input and it looks like we have Joan at the microphone, so.
So this is not just one small, small parcel. This is, this includes Mount Hannah and what other areas?
No, this is, this is just one small parcel in Nice. So in 2019, when the Cobb consolidation occurred, Mount Hannah's assets, all of their assets, as well as Bonanza Springs and Starview's assets were transferred to Cobb. There was a parcel which is listed and identified as APN 030083360, which is over in Nice, that was transferred inadvertently to Cobb. So this action today proposes just to revert that parcel back to county ownership.
So this is a parcel in Nice?
Yes.
Correct.
It was kind of a mishap?
Yes.
Yes.
And it's back into Lake County?
Yes.
That's what I want to know. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan. Are there any other public input comments from the, I'm looking on Zoom, I don't see anybody, so I will bring it back to the board for action. And anybody can take this up.
Are these all separate? And, Sir Chair, I offer the resolution?
Resolution has been offered.
Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Director Harder.
Maybe Anita can speak to this. Do they need to authorize the chair to sign the certificate of acceptance as well? Is there a motion needed for that?
I'm reading the order.
And approve.
Oh, yeah.
Where it says now therefore be resolved, the Board of Supervisors, that authorization is granted to the specialty administrator to initiate the transfer of real property identified by APN 030-083-360 from Cobb Area County Water District to the County of Lake, approve the quitclaim deed and authorize the chair of the board to sign the certificate of acceptance and record the deed. So it appears then the only outstanding action would be for, well, the chair to sign, but that's all covered in the resolution. So approval of the resolution.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, though. Thank you, Director Harder. All right.
Thank you.
And it looks like that closes that 5.17. So our consent agenda items that have been pulled are finished. Let's see. I'll start with like 7.2. Consideration of resolution of the Lake County Board of Supervisors authorizing the application for the permanent local housing allocation program for the Collier Avenue apartment project. And with that, it looks like we have Director Todd Metcalf from Director of the Behavioral Health Services here to conduct this presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning, members of the board. Todd Metcalf, Behavioral Services. I'm going to introduce this item, but I do have some subject matter experts on hand to help explain this a little more in depth. This, this resolution before you is for the permanent local housing allocation program, which is funded by the California Department of Housing and Community Development. The funding is, it's based upon a five-year formula and this funding is specific to Lake County, which what they're estimating is approximately $1.5 million. And we, we plan to use these funds for the much anticipated and long awaited Collier Avenue Apartments project. So as I mentioned earlier, I do have some subject matter experts here, hopefully in the Zoom room. We are working very closely with Rural Community Housing Development Corporation in this, with, in this project, as well as our housing contractor, Linda Hedstrom, which I believe she might also be in the Zoom room. And so I'd like to turn it over to Rural Community Housing Development Corporation. I believe Ryan LaRue is able to speak more to this and then I will certainly add or jump in as needed during their, whatever they plan to, to say about this. So Ryan, are you, are you with us?
I am with you, Todd.
Awesome.
Thank you so much and good morning, Board. Thank you for hearing this item today. Yes, as Todd mentioned, this source of funds has been brought to our attention as a possible use to support Collier Avenue project. And interestingly enough, it also has a timeout clause to where if we don't use these monies, they could be or likely disencumbered back to the state. So it's really in Todd and I's and Linda's opinion that it's advantageous to utilize these dollars on this project, which is most closely shovel ready, as we have our last funding application due at the end of this week. An allocation such as this could make our project, will make our project much more competitive to receive the remaining tax credit dollars necessary to fully finance the project. Basically, the way the tax credit program works is the more competitive you are is based on how much money you come in, local public dollars come in with at application stage. So we're really excited to have this opportunity before you and I'm happy to answer any questions that may be, that you may have. Otherwise, Linda has been engaged in this process, supporting Lake County. And Linda, is there anything you would like to add that I missed maybe?
I would like to correct the amount number on the resolution. My original typo, we caught it in review, probably RCHDC's sharp i's, but in section two on the first page of the resolution, it does say not to exceed the years one and two allocations, but those two years total, 602, 469, not the 483 listed. So I did want to just correct that typo. So the total amount is 602,469.
Thank you, Linda.
Thank you. Is there anything else you'd like to add, Linda?
Just a reminder, the board probably remembers the No Place Like Home funding that it considered a couple of years ago and that housing plan discussed, the county pursuing not just the use of No Place Like Home, but additional funding sources that came their way. And this is one of those funding sources. This is something, this PLHA fund was, has been advocated for, gee, 30 or 40 years among affordable housing proponents in the state. And we finally got that adopted just a handful of years ago. So this is the fruits of our labor and just the county's continuing pursuit, pursuit of funding towards the Collier Avenue project.
Thank you. Is there anyone else, Todd, you would like to?
No, unless, I mean, if the board has any questions, we'll, we'll do our best to answer them.
See, yeah, I have a couple of questions. So I'll just go to them briefly. And I'm just, because I remember this, we've talked about it multiple times, you know, when it comes to it, and I'm glad that we're coming forward with some more funding. I know that nothing is worse than giving funding back and that's what I'm hoping that we don't do in the long run. And so that's why I'm asking a couple of questions. Don't want to belabor or, you know, make any situation that seems like I'm trying to not, you know, go through with it. I just want to ask these and make sure these measures are in place. So for example, I know that with this project, when it comes forward, who determines, because I know there's a 49% of the amount of people that will be staying in this project, this area, will be 49% considered mentally ill. Who determines that and at what level? And I don't know if either person can answer that or?
I believe the funding speaks to that, but in addition to serving folks that are experiencing mental, mental illness, we're also working with Rivacost Regional Center. They are going to have clients housed there as well as low income folks. But Ryan, you might be able to add more to that?
Yeah. Yeah. Thank you, Todd. Good question. So the determining entity would be Lake County Behavioral Health would be referring their clients to this housing community. So that's the key equation here is that they're already clients of the county who would be referred to RCHDC as the property management agent and then we would vet them based on income eligibility criteria. And yeah, I think. And yeah, I think that answered the question, but.
Similar to our Bevins Court complex here in Lakeport. It would, it would work the same way.
The Bevins Court, yeah. Okay. And then, so there'll be some folks determined to stay there under that condition. And then there's also the families that will be low, considered low income. Are they going to live like amongst each other or how's that? Or is that further down the development phase?
And Ryan, I hate to keep leaning on you. I'm, I'm, I'm trying to remember what the, what the blueprint looked like.
That's, that's what I'm here for, Todd. It's considered inclusionary housing to where we don't put, you know, a certain population at one end of the community and certain population in the other. So it is integrated inclusionary housing under the federal housing first model. So that's, that's, yeah, there, there'll be 20 units for Todd's clients and 10 units for the regional center clients, and then nine units for just general low income with no specific special needs designation. That's not saying it's not available to special needs tenants. They're just not targeted as such or restricted by the funding sources as such. So it's, you know, we don't, to follow like HIPAA and whatnot, we don't make a certain hallway for a certain population, if that makes sense.
No, thank you. That answers that. And my last one, I'll just add, I had two more, but I'll tie this one together because it kind of makes, it goes under the same thing. Because like mentioned before about grants and staff, being able to manage the grant funding and all of that. And the report that was given back in April about us kind of getting out of that whole situation and, you know, you know, the state report that we received about behavioral health struggling with what they're already dealing with. How will this be carried forward, given the status of that? Is your department going to be able to handle that, you know, referring and working with that to ensure that that, that this goes smoothly? Because what, not only am I worried about losing or giving the funding back now, but at a later date as well? Or people that are working, you know, you know, they'll, they'll work towards this and then they're working all the, towards this housing project and then it doesn't go through? It's like we could have been working on something else. So I just want to make sure and give assurance. And maybe even something can be created that ensures that this follows through effectively and works to a point that everybody's served properly. Because that's the biggest thing is when we get this funding, we want to make sure everyone's served, so.
Absolutely. And as I said, this would, we would just do pretty much what we're doing at the Bevins Court Complex. And remember, this is a permanent supportive housing facility. So these folks are much higher functioning. They would have access to staff Monday through Friday, 8 to 5, just like anyone else would. And, and so we are very confident that this will not be an issue, that once we refer folks there, they would still be connected to whatever resources, programs and services that they would need. So I, we've, we've got this.
Okay. All right. That's, that's the only questions that I?
Yeah, no, I appreciate that.
Yeah. Supervisor Sabatier?
I have questions from the questions. There was no clarification on what Supervisor Chair Crandall mentioned, 49%. But I just heard 20 for behavioral health, 10 for some other agency, and then was it 9 for the general population? Well, that's not 49%. So we're looking at almost 75% of the complex would be for behavioral health type of support services?
Well, there's a bit of a distinction between the regional center and Todd's clients. So the 49% comes from the No Place Like Home criteria, which is where out of the 40 units, Todd got 20 for his clients. And then, but so generally speaking, the answer to your question is yes. 75% designated special needs tenants.
Okay.
At 49% of which for Lake County and 10 units for Redwood Coast Regional Center for individuals, developmentally delayed individuals.
Okay. And when you say Lake County, you mean the agency Lake County, such as behavioral health, not Lake County residents or anything like that? That would be all Lake County residents can fill up all of those places? Just want to clarify when you say Lake County is all?
Correct. Yes. Both, I believe, you need to be a Lake County resident to receive Todd's services. Is that correct, Todd?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, so yes.
And so upon researching, and I don't have it right in front of me, the PLHA? Is that the right acronym?
Permanent Local Housing Allocation.
Correct. Okay.
Had to write it out.
It, it, it doesn't specify the specifics of what we're attempting to do. It specifies low income, and obviously what we're attempting to do fits within low income. I know that when we talked about Collier, in case that things don't pan out exactly as what we're planning, that there's the possibility of just aiming for low income. Because I think that what we're aiming for here is a small percentage of our population that meet the needs and requirement. But low income is, I mean, we're like 38% or whatever our percentage is for the county when it comes to low income. And I think that it's not just, I think that number probably grows depending on what the definition of low income is and what we're using. If there's issues with the process to create the services that we're attempting to do, is it possible within the realm of the money that we're receiving to just end up doing a low-income housing rather than the specified services in case those services? Like, do we have that flexibility and is it just going to be 9? And if there is some struggles for whatever reason to fill the other apartments? I just, we are in absolute dire need of housing. And I want to make sure that we're not saying, sorry, you don't meet the criteria because we're holding all of these units for such and such, when we know that there's a greater need out there? Is there that flexibility within the project that is being worked on so that if we do not have anything to fill, any person or client to fill those 30 units, that that's flexible and can expand to make sure that we do provide housing to those that need it?
Well, I would add to that that 99.9% of these folks are already low income, whether they are Rivercoast Regional Center folks or are?
And I'm going to interrupt you. The idea is that the regional center or behavioral health don't have the ability to serve those people, so you can't place them there? Or you don't have the people, whatever the reason might be? Is that 9 flexible for the general population to become 11, to become 15, to become whatever? So that we're not stuck with empty homes with people that need homes in our community? That, that's the question that I want to put out there.
Yeah, I can take that, Todd, if you'd like. Yes, so I think a great example of that, Mr. Sabatier, is, as you may be aware, you, there was a farmworker project in Lake County recently that received a similar forgiveness for the designation and was able to open it up to the general public. So short, short answer is yes. Because once we partner with a private investor to fund the remaining equity needed, they, we have fiduciary requirements to rent this community up. And so if Todd is not able to give us tenants that we have a responsibility to fill those units or there's significant financial repercussions. So short answer is yes, the units will not be vacant. And we will work with the funding sources to ensure that they're filled with low. The, the, the major factor here is low income, because that's what all these funding sources contemplate. So while we have it designated set aside, there are, at times, we have seen workarounds to those when the units aren't filled, similar to what I was trying to say about the farmworker project in your neighboring city.
Yeah, no, I appreciate you bringing that up. I had forgotten about that, but I do remember that that had changed to that specification that now it's available for low income rather than just farmworkers or the availability criteria changed. So I appreciate that. And again, my questions are specifically because of the housing crisis for everybody. I mean, even our staff here who are not low income, I guess depending on where you are in the position, they're all struggling when they move here to take a job, to find housing. So I just wanted to make sure we weren't going to have that lack of flexibility. That's the most important part to me. I also appreciate that we're not losing any of the previous year's worth of money, because this is after the year three. At that point, the PLHA money will not continue to fund this. It will be available for us for other purposes? Because that seems to be an annual thing.
I believe it's after year five, but I.
And maybe I missed?
It's after year five, correct?
It is a five-year program, but each year we're allocated a certain amount. At, by the end of this calendar year, if we don't apply to use for a specific project, years 1 and 2, which is that $602,000 total, we lose that. The year three allocation should be out any minute. And then years 4 and 5 are anticipated, you know, following. Those years 3, 4 and 5 are going to total another $848,000, approximately, to be used in the future. But these are the years 1 and 2 that we're requesting for Collier Avenue that have to be used by the end of this calendar year. Use it or lose it.
So, so I think to clarify, Mr. Sabatier, the answer to your, yes, the remaining years will be eligible for another use.
Awesome. And I think that you've answered my question that there's flexibility just in case it doesn't go as panned out, which creates housing for the general purpose of creating housing and that eventually that those funds don't continue to fund this project in any other way, it would, it would now become available after year 5 for further projects, which we need. And I hope at that point, we've developed a housing strategy plan to be able to know what our next project will be before, way before then. So I appreciate it. Those are, those are my questions.
And if I may just go back to Supervisor Sabatier, when you, you, you have concerns that perhaps these units may not be filled. If you may recall, you know, last week I gave a presentation about CalAim, California Advancing an Innovative Medical Cal, which is going to expand and, and sort of loosen up medical eligibility. So we're going to see even a larger influx of folks that will qualify for our programs and services. So I'm, I'm very confident that I doubt that there's ever going to be a vacancy in this complex once it is built. If anything, there's going to be a waiting list. So I'm not, I'm not too concerned about it. But I'm glad you brought it up because it's good to know that there is flexibility.
And my concern is your vacancies. I know that it's continuously difficult to fill in some of those positions.
Yes.
And, and who knows what the future holds? Hopefully, it's positive. I remain hopeful. But just to prepare for the worst, I'm content with the response that I received.
Yes, you'll, you'll hear about that later.
Vice Chair, Scott?
I'm just going back on the question of flexibility. I'm a little concerned that we're, what would that flexibility look like? What's that timeframe? Because I believe there will be a waiting list to be able to get into these apartments, people that qualify for it. Would people that, that are living at Hope Center? Because they're, because I know that the comment's been that you may not have enough staffing to be able to take care of it, to be able to get these people. But Hope Center clients would be eligible, correct, to be able to move into these apartments?
Yes, and that's what I've mentioned before, that this, this is kind of like that missing piece of the puzzle, that, you know, Hope Center is transitional housing, which means we have to get these folks ready for, you know, a more permanent housing situation. So this would be that.
So it's partner agencies too that are working with behavioral health?
Absolutely.
So it's not just your people placing?
Yes, as long as, as long as they're eligible and qualified for our programs and services, they're in.
Okay. And then do we have a waiting list for Bevins right now? I believe we do.
It's a short one, but I believe so, yes.
Okay. Well, I, I just, I, I'm really excited about this program. We definitely need this.
Thank you.
It's, it is a piece that's missing from Hope Center having that permanent housing structure in place. So I'm excited to see this move forward.
Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Scott.
Any questions? All right.
Just a last comment. Obviously, going for our formulated allocations that are there. Good job on that. But, you know, also in the memo, you know, HCD has a lot of funds, you know, for the competitive side of it too. And hopefully, we can look at all options there. I know they have a bunch of programs running right now for housing. There's a lot of money out there and the competitive ones. I think Lake County, we're starting to be competitive. We have a project, so making sure that if there are any other dollars out there that we're at least asking for them now. We may not get it this year, but over the next few years, I think it's going to continue that way through the, through the budget, through the state. So let's continue on the path that we're on. So I completely support this project.
Thank you, Supervisor Simon. And rest assured, Linda Hedstrom, with whom, with whom we contract to help us with this housing stuff, she's always sending stuff our way. So we're, we've got our eyes on, on, on this stuff. As does the Housing Continue of Care.
All right. Supervisor Sabatier?
And just a quick question. We don't need to do this under the jurisdiction of the housing authority? We do this as Board of Supervisors?
Correct, if that was for me.
Or, I don't know, but anybody, I'm looking at Ms. Grant, just to make sure.
I'm assuming that it's going under the county because of the type of funding, but.
Correct. That's, yeah, and that's how the resolution is worded.
Right. That assumes the resolution's correct. But I'm assuming it's because of the, the type of funding. And that's why it's going under the county. Mr. LaRue's nodding, as is Linda Hedstrom, so I must be right. Yay.
All right. So with that, it looks like, do we have anybody in the chambers with public comment? I see a hand up in Zoom. And so Betsy Khan, if you would like to unmute, and we'll start in three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Linda and Ryan. I have one question about the impact. Will this be counted as a contribution to our requirement for providing affordable housing under the general plan housing element? And I see Linda nodding. Thank you very much. That's what I wanted to. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for the question. Is there anyone else in Zoom that has a question? I don't see any others, so I'll bring it back to the board and for action.
Mr. Chair, I offer the resolution.
Resolution has been offered.
As amended.
Yeah, oh, yes, with the $600,000 instead of the other, right?
All right. Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Director Metcalf.
Thank you.
And thank you, Linda.
Thank you very much.
I see Scott there too. He just, he just signed off, but thank you. All right. With that, we'll move on to 7.3. Are we prepared to do this right now? I'll go ahead and move on to 7.4. Consideration of proposed findings of fact and decision in the appeal of We Grow LLC AB 22-01. And Anita Grant, County Council, will have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Relatively self-explanatory, I hope. The findings and decision drafted before you today is indicative of the, the Board's unanimous decision that was made on May 17. There is a typo in my memo. It should say May 17, 2022, not 2021. I apologize for that. It would be very late if that were the case. The findings are based upon your Board's decision-making and your determination, again, to deny the appeal. In this case, the applicant and the appellant are one in the same. So if your Board finds the findings and decision to be acceptable, you would have two actions today. One would be by motion to approve the findings of fact and decision. The second would be a motion to deny the appeal.
All right. Any questions from the Board? Anybody from the public? And I'm not seeing anyone on Zoom raise their hand either, so I'll bring it back to the Board for action.
Two motions, correct. Ms. Chair, I move to approve the findings of fact and decision and authorize the Chair to sign.
Second.
So I have a motion to end a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, and motion carries.
Mr. Chair, I move to deny the appeal.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. With that, we'll close this item, which is 7.4. All right, with that, we'll close this item, which is 7.4, and move on to 7.5, which is Consideration of Resolution Authorizing the Public Services Director to Execute Documents with the California Department of Transportation for the Clean California Local Grant Program. And it looks like we have Lars Ewing, our Public Services Director, here to report on this and present this item.
Okay, good morning, Board. But earlier this year, Lake County Public Services applied for a grant program through Caltrans for a new state program. It was the Clean California Initiative, specifically under that program, the the local grant program. So so we applied for a project that was essentially at 15 county parks. There's also a non-infrastructure part of that, which is a marketing campaign and a an education outreach to local schools. But the the main part of the project is improvements to a variety of county parks. Those parks were selected because they they resulted in no local match for the county. So this is a $1.3 million grant, no local match. And in order to continue, we need a resolution authorizing me to execute certain documents that are spelled out in the resolution. But I I thought it was important to come here. Typically, something like this might be on consent, but but I wanted to to celebrate the fact that that the the folks in Public Services, you know, successfully finally got a parks grant. There have been a number of grants that we have pursued through, not through Caltrans, but through through state parks, and those are exceptionally competitive. And and so this was an opportunity in a roundabout way. We're looking at, you know, litter abatement, litter cleanup, but it also includes a beautification initiative. So so we took the opportunity to go after it, and and we were successful. So I appreciate the staff that I work with, the 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 honor of working with, and I wanted to thank them right now, but happy to answer any questions on the on the resolution.
Thank you, Lars. Any questions from board?
No, just awesome. Congratulations.
Yeah, I'm glad you put it on here so we could hear about it, because I agree, you I know that there was one you did over in Nice, and you tried, and we couldn't get that. So I know you guys put in for a lot of different grants, and it's competitive.
I know.
So, yeah, it's a sometimes we'll see other cities get it instead of us, and it's like, let's see, we have. Anybody from public that wants to comment on this? No, I'll bring it back to the board for action.
I'll offer the resolution.
Resolution has been offered.
Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Lars.
Thank you.
Good job, Public Services.
Good job. All right, so I'll go back to our 7 point. Let's see.
Three.
7.3, we're ready. All right, so.
We're ready.
Why don't we work on ensuring that we log in the, what is it?
Not in attendees or on our panel.
Okay, so let's do calendars while we're waiting for for that. And so we'll start with calendars, and I'll offer who would like to start.
I'll go ahead and start. Mine's very fast.
Go ahead.
Going to try to meet with a couple department heads later this afternoon to finish off a conversation regarding the database software that I was creating, that I demonstrated for you guys. Having a conversation, similar conversation with our ag commissioner and our CDD department tomorrow morning. Looks like I will be attending at the Robinson Rancheria Council Meeting, and that is what I have. And then I am off until July 11, and will be preparing in my inbound trip back home to be back here on July 12. Little saddened that I won't be here to celebrate the Fourth of July with the the community I serve, but that's the timeline of when I will be taking my break today or this year. That's it.
Supervisor Pyska?
Well, I do want to report that we had fantastic workshops last Thursday and Friday at the Luther and Castle with stakeholders from all over the county, and we did really amazing intensive work. And I just want to let you know that if you have constituents or people in your area that are interested in this kind of work, just reach out to Supervisor Simon and myself. We're building this collaborative that's gonna that supports and empowers everybody in our county to do this really important work. So just use us as resources. We can point you in the right direction and, you know, help you get started with anything that anybody would like to do. So that was really amazing work and continuing that work forward. And I'm going to be taking some time off, too, with my family. I will be at the Buckingham Annual Meeting on the 9th. And then on the 11th, I'm meeting with CAO. I'm back here on the 12th.
All right. Supervisor Simon?
Just want to report that did have the Benefits Committee meeting yesterday. You know, we have it once a year. I know all the folks were on there. I know there was some stuff that we went over, always looking at, you know, how we move through the next couple of years, obviously, one year at a time. And, you know, I know Pam Samick was on there and everyone else, but just looking at how we move forward, always trying to anticipate. As we know, everything, you know, insurance is always, you're waiting to see what's going to happen, whether it's medical, dental, vision each year. So I think that we're making good headway and moving in the right direction, but always looking to anticipate any increases in the future. And, you know, I know Pam will bring those things to the board if needed. So attended that meeting yesterday. We'll finish up today. You know, we'll be here over the next couple of weeks. I have constituent meetings tomorrow, preparing for our July 12 meeting, but basically, I don't know if the weekly planning meetings, I know they're going off and on. Jessica, do we have one this week?
For the home?
I got it on the calendar for the home hardening. I always have it on there, I guess, so.
Yeah, it's on.
Yep, so have that on the calendar on Friday. Obviously, the holiday on Monday, so Susan, we won't meet on that. We can meet Friday. Oh, Susan's not here. That's all right. And then following week, kind of the same. We don't have a meeting. I will just spend the time working with constituents, have a few issues in my area that been working on, and hopefully, we'll have some agenda items on the 12th, at least one, you know, to help a constituent in our area. So a lot of different things going on, you know. Obviously, I just want to thank, you know, all of our local fire departments, Calfire, everything. There's a lot of small incidents that are happening around, but just the, you know, being prepared, the pre-positioned teams, you know, having the equipment we need to get on these things early is so important. We're going to have a dry spell here for a while, and it's only going to get drier throughout the year. So just want to thank them for all their hard work, you know, that they really they really go after these things. And, you know, we talked about it, witnessed it already. Last year, myself and Supervisor Pyska watched the the big Black Hawk or whatever come in. Last year, they kind of doubled the capacity on our airdrops, went from 500 gallons to 1,000 gallons, which makes, you know, a big time difference when that thing gets up in the air and early gets out there, helps our boots on the ground, get on these things a little quicker. So, you know, keeping our fingers crossed as we move forward. But Lake County seems to be a well-oiled machine with all of our local fire departments, Calfires, they work together, and all the agencies in the county. So other than that, that's that's what I have.
Vice Chair Scott?
Yes, a couple report outs from Hope Rising. They have a new chair, as I'm going to be stepping down from that committee. Victoria Kelly is the new chair of Hope Rising. I'm unsure who from the board is going to be attending those Hope Rising meetings. But they also have a new executive director, starting July 1, Justin Gaddy. Excited to have him step up from project manager to our executive director, so he will start July 1. Another report out, the Juvenile Justice Commission meeting. We had a meeting last week for the first time in like two years. This was a committee that I sat on before becoming a supervisor, so I know it's on my committee assignments, but I plan on continuing after supervisor, because it's not really connected here, but it was a committee that I attended. But they still have seven open slots if people from the public are interested in understanding the juvenile justice, what they do, the probation's part of it, overseeing our juveniles that are in in custody. We actually only have one at this time, and it's out of county because we don't have a local facility. But if you're interested, you can give me a call, 849-4414, and I can direct you to how to fill out an application for that, because it's not the same application as we have here for the Board of Supervisors. It's a little bit more in-depth. You have to be fingerprinted and background checked for that. For my calendar, it's pretty open. I will be attending the Blue Zones Walk tomorrow in Lakeport at 5:30, and then a ribbon cutting on the 1st for the new mural here in Lakeport at 5:00. And that looks really it, till coming back on the 11th to prepare for Tuesday's meeting on the 12th.
What's the ribbon cutting for?
The mural that celebrates.
Oh, the mural.
Yeah. Our essential workers.
Looks like I'm the last one, so I'll just report out on the Blue Ribbon Committee that we had last week. And I I don't know if I read it this way, but I ended up going to Clear Lake. I seen Alan, and they were like, we don't have a meeting here. Well, you could use the the conference room. And then I looked at my my phone, and it said Lakeport. So I drove back, made it in time. We passed the projects that were for 2022, the approval of the 2022 projects were the Ecocultural Tulley Restoration Project, the AEM Survey of Lake County Groundwater Basin, Scotts Valley Aquifer Conditions Evaluation, Environmental Education Pathway Proposal, Integrated Pest Management for Sustainable Shorelines, the Primrose Removal and Tulley Restoration, Adobe Creek Hydrology Groundwater Monitoring Project, GDE and Wetland Restoration Analysis and Implementation, HAB Harmful Algal Blooms and Bank Erosion Proposal, Web-Based Clearinghouse for Data and Citizen Science App, Common Carp and Goldfish Management, and the Hypolymnatic Oxygenation Pilot Project. And so we're looking to submit those for the for project proposal for funding this year to the state. I keep touching my screen, even though it's not, but that's for the water resources to go to for California Natural Resources. And so that was a that was done Wednesday. We got that finished. Then Friday, I actually went to Lake Pillsbury to swear some people in instead of going to the Golden State Connect, and so I made it out there. And actually, it was my first wedding on Friday as well, so that was an interesting thing, that I was able to turn it back in and get everything done. The assessor was very helpful in in getting me what I needed. The department, I called them, and they said, nope, just bring it here, and we're good to go. So that was that was fun. And, you know, just knowing, I've seen people get married, and I see them here, and I'm like, well, I guess I could do it. I didn't know. People keep asking me. So anyhow, let's see, tomorrow, we have the meeting with Robinson Rancheria regarding the Middle Creek Restoration, the discussion that we we have with the leadership. Thursday, I have the content process with IT at 1:00 PM, looking at some of the things that were proposed. There's a meeting on Thursday at 1:00. Do you remember if we have?
I believe we got an email from Director French saying that that was more of a technical meeting and that there's no need for us to be there, but if you want to, I'm sure you can.
Okay. Friday is open, Tuesday's basically open the 6th, 4:00 PM down in Clear Lake Oaks at the Moose Lodge, CSA Number Two meeting usually after that, Thursday on the 7th, AR 6:30, 3:30, which is Cal 20 Village and Upper Lake Water Project Safer Team Meeting. Let's see, Friday's open, and then on the 11th, Monday, meeting with the CAO, and back here on the 12th for a Board of Supervisors meeting. And so with that, let's see if we can see how our. Okay, why don't we take? Yeah, let's take a let's come back at 11:00, and we'll take a break. All right, welcome back from our break. And so we will go to our 7.3, Consideration of Extending Acela Civic Platform Permitting Software and Supporting True Point Maintenance Services for Acela. And we have our Community Development Director, Mary Darby, here, and I'll give the floor to you.
Thank you so much. I am so excited about the Acela software. So since our last meeting, I would go back and say, one of the questions were or was that was asked, where have we been with the last six years of Acela? So I went back and did some extensive research and discovered that we are further along with Acela than I had originally thought. Originally, Acela was signed contract in 2015, and it was implemented in 2016 with user license for 10 users. Then we went back, the department upscaled the Acela licenses to 23 user licenses, so we upscaled by 13 licenses. And currently, the department is requesting that we upscale again additional eight user licenses that will take us to 31 licenses. The purpose for the increase is that we now have more staff, so that's exciting. And so we are requesting a couple of things. One is that the board considers supervisors consider extending Acela either a one year or for a three-year period. My recommendation is for three years. So since 2015, for the last years, we've only been updating Acela or renewing or extending Acela annually. So we've never had a multi-user Acela agreement. It's always been annually, and so my recommendation is to go update for three years. If we extend Acela for one year, there is a 7% charge that we pay every year. If we do a multi-user agreement, then that cost goes down to 4% per year. Acela, I a little bit about Acela. So after my review of Acela and actually being in it and working it totally, there are three modules in Acela. It's for code enforcement, building, and planning. Right now, we're using Acela mostly for code enforcement and building for intaking of permits. Unfortunately, we didn't activate the planning module, so when there were challenges with the planning for Acela, we didn't really know what it could do because we didn't activate it. So now that it's activated, I'll tell you a little bit about what Acela can do. So Acela can track the permits, applications that come in to the Planning Division. They can also, Acela can also create reports that will show us how many applications that have come in. In addition, we have added a function since I've been here, where now we can actually invoice the applications that come in based on a number of hours. We can track those hours, and we can actually print an invoice to charge applicants for services. So the analogy I like to give about Acela, I think it's a very powerful tool, and I know it's totally different than what we've been hearing since I've been here about Acela. But I do think Acela is a powerful tool that can be used to assist the county. It can provide us with the mechanism to track documents. It can print reports. It can it can combine and be used with GIS to identify locations of where we are with different permits, and it actually can also generate pinpoints on the maps for floodplains or any kind of zoning issues that we may have. I was going to provide a demonstration today about what Acela can do and actually show you and demonstrate it, but at a later date, I would like to come back and actually use it myself and demonstrate to you how powerful of a tool it is and what it can do. So I think that the board has actually done a great job with bringing that platform on to the county. I like to think that the Acela is, I like to use the analogy, that is 90% baked. It needs 10% more to put the frosting on the cake for it to really show you what it can do. And that's where I am, and that's what I discovered over the last years of what we've been doing with Acela. So Acela does have a customer complaint portal. We've only been using that portal for code enforcement, but there is a portal also that can mirror what code enforcement is doing to track any type of complaints that come in. In particular, the board approved a a customer service representative that's going to handle our complaints, and I've been designing what she would do to take those complaints in and how she will regurgitate those complaints out to each individual board member, so you'll know what's going on in your districts. So that is completed. It the it just needs to be activated, and I can't get that module activated until the board consider, review, and consider the proposals and the contracts that I have before you today. So that can be done, and once that's activated, then I can show you what Acela can do.
All right.
Okay, so having said that, I do have two contracts before you for review and consideration. One is for a one-year annual extension, and the other one is for a multi-user extension that will give us three years to pull Acela. that will give us three years to pull Acela, to show you what it really can do, and to actually go back and backtrack some of those invoices that we have outstanding. We can generate those funds for the county. And I think that kind of completes my presentation, unless you have specific questions.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Yeah, thank you very much for that information and giving us options as well. My question to you is, from what I've done in my research of Acela, is that there's quite a robust public access module to that? Are we paying for that entire module, or are we only paying for the complaint part? Because I believe there's a module where developers can upload their, submit their applications, submit their attachments, and right now, I don't believe that we're utilizing that. Is that something that's ready for us to use, and it just hasn't been activated, as you stated, or is that some, another module that we would have to purchase?
So good question. So it is a module that we're already paying for, we just haven't activated it, and that is on the planning side of it. So the complaint module is what they call it, is on the planning side, and we would just have to activate that component. And it would mirror a lot of what code enforcement does.
And so just to at least let the board be aware, and for public comment, at this moment in time, because I know that there's modules that we're not using yet, I, I am going to be looking at the one-year mark, just to make sure that, what's our progress after that year? Is there problems that have come up that we weren't aware of, or things of the kind? I think the difference between a 4% to 7%, it's definitely a difference, but it's not a huge difference in comparison to moving forward with something that may not be providing us exactly what we need. I think it can, but it, we need to make sure that it's within our capacity to get to that point, and also making sure we're no longer paying for pieces of modules that we have not been utilizing and have just been kind of left in the dark and not being brought out for us to really utilize. If we're paying for it, I want to see us using it. So I'm looking at the one year, just to see the progress, where we are, and making sure that that's the correct decision to keep moving forward. So.
Thank you. I just also want to add that with Acela, it is also a tool that the users, our staff, would actually have to use. So I am definitely on them about making sure they're updating Acela, putting projects in Acela, and the training of. So in Acela, there's even training modules where you can send out the training module number one, how to set up your account, how to input data. So there are actually models that, modules that come with Acela that are already there.
And so just my question is, are you ensuring they're doing the, you'll ensure they'll conduct those training modules from here forward?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, I just have a point of clarification. I wasn't sure, there's no difference for the first year between the one-year contract and the three-year contract.
Yes, there is. For a one-year contract, there's a 7%, and then for three years, there's, they charge 4% for each year.
Okay, but I, I thought you had said something about the multi-user was for the three.
Yes, the multi-user agreement is for the three years. And in that three years, they charge 4% as opposed to charging 7% for every time we extend annually.
Okay, but the multi-user is for year one, just for the single year also?
No, it would be for three years. So multi-user would be for three years at 4%. And if we were just going to extend for one year, then it would be 7%.
For the next time, if we...
So every time you extend, we would have to come back to the board, and I don't know what it would be in 2003, 23 or 24, but for the next extension, it would be two, it would be seven, 7%. Is that clear?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions? I'll open it up to the public for any questions. I don't see anybody in the chamber. Is anybody on Zoom that has a question? And I will bring it back to the board for action.
And just to, just doing some math real quick, it's the difference between like 3,000 and 4,900 or something like that, between 4% and 7% of 72,000? Something around that? So just, just to kind of get an idea of what would be the discrepancy if we go with one year versus the three-year? Which I think is a nominal discrepancy, in my opinion, just to make sure that we're progressing. Hence why I offered a one-year.
So there are two motions on this one, because we have two different contracts.
Correct.
We have to choose.
Oh, we're choosing? I thought there was one for support in here.
Yes, there is a, there's a second.
500.
Sorry.
I'm sorry, there's a second component. So what you have before you for Acela is a one-year contract, and you also have a three-year contract for your consideration, and there is about a 3,000-plus difference between the one year and the three-year. Also, to put that frosting on the cake that we talked about earlier, that I talked about earlier, we would need assistance by TruePoint Solutions. And in order for them to get us to the point where we are, where we need to be, I'm requesting that approval for their services in the amount of $18,600, and that's $150 per hour and approximately 120 hours.
Okay, we already had the public input, right?
Yes, I did.
And just to speak on that, I've experienced training with major software. Let's make sure that whatever is in the contract of what we are supposed to be getting is exactly what we get.
Absolutely.
Because I've had multiple phone calls before for especially major software upgrades, where we've had to tell them that you didn't meet your contract, come back and retrain, because we're not ready to use this. We need to make sure that we really get the results that we're looking for.
Absolutely guaranteed.
Yeah.
Okay, so two motions and two separate contracts. So I'm going to offer a motion, and we'll see. I'm going to, I'm going to move to approve the three-year contract with Acela.
Second?
So I have a motion to end a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries 4-1.
Thank you so much.
And then...
Did I need the dollar amount in there? I need a, okay, so will I have to rescind that motion, because I did not add a dollar amount?
I think you can, you can just amend it and redo it. It just happened.
Okay.
And so...
Let me get that real quick. I apologize.
It's 229-526-84.
So amended.
All right. We don't need to take the vote again?
Yes.
Okay, so, so I have a motion to end a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries 4-1. And then we have the support, right?
I'll move, grab this one again, too. I will move to approve the TruePoint Solutions contract for $18,600 for a total of 120 hours for support services.
Second?
So I have a motion to end a second. To all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Thank you very much for this, and I look forward to seeing Acela solve some of our complaint issues and all of that. That would be great. That would really be helpful. Thank you so much. All right. Okay, so I'm just going to scan this real quick, because I think we've covered everything. I'm not trying to jinx this, I'm just saying it. And so with that, we'll move to closed session. 8.1, Public Employee Evaluation, Public Works/Water Resources Director, and 8.2, Public Employee Evaluation, Behavioral Health Director. With that, we'll go into closed session.